Instructions for a polling that we're doing tonight.
I scan it later. Oh, yeah, my beginning.
For the rest of the.
Yeah, you really don't want to.
I'm good.
You still talking after I nominated?
I don't know. I just.
All sorts of things.
I noticed that today. I was like, I was like, oh, yeah. Kind of that happened, but I'll do it to you.
Yep.
Like I hit that point where I drink enough water, like the post workout cooldown started.
Justin.
I just dropped my tip like five degrees.
So it's like. So it'll be a non-issue. There you go.
Oh, nice.
Take this to the earth.
Crowds.
They all.
We'll still.
Give it that part.
Well, it's.
Uh, this was dressed in.
Yeah.
It's great usually.
Yeah, yeah.
He doesn't want to sit in the back.
Usually it's still worth his camera off.
Okay.
To climb.
I want to be in there to climb.
All right, we got about a minute. I'll give you the cue here in a second, Chad.
Eastern side of the country is free as.
Oh, it's gonna be like sixty. Yeah. Looking forward to it. But it's funny. It's like big temperature swings like during the day. I guess like sixty and a nine.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you. Welcome, everybody, to the February fourteenth, twenty twenty four meeting, where is the planning commission? Uh, welcome. I hope this is a romantic evening. You all were visiting. Who does it? Aaron, do you do the roll call? Who does the roll call?
Do we ever really?
We don't ever do really anything formal. We just take accounting of who's here and Aaron does that. So we're good.
I'm here, yeah.
Um, so I've asked Kieran to read our land acknowledgement tonight. So please.
We, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral uh land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawksan Indian Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today, who are absorbed and relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize the aspects of tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as our traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial and their role today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the histories of dispossession, force removal, and abridged treaty rights that allow our nation, state, and city to develop as it has today. We recommend that community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of eighteen fifty four.
Thank you. So, so we have approval of the fourteen, February fourteenth agenda and approval of the January tenth minutes. So I would entertain emotional votes.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All approved.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so I'm gonna take a little sidestep here. And first, I think I'm gonna have Ryan introduce our new economic development director. Welcome.
Yeah, so everybody, we have Vanessa Dolby here tonight, uh, new director of community and economic development. Uh, Vanessa has been a local resident for some time. Um, it came to us from the city of Renton, which was for a number of years. So welcome, Vanessa.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'll have a name placard soon, so you all won't have to keep my name memorized, but I'm excited to be here and be a part of the city of Lacey and um continue to work on the great things that they do here. So, thank you.
Well, welcome. Thank you. And then I want to take a moment for everybody. Uh, we've got some new faces here. Um, just to kind of introduce yourself. So uh, we'll start with Aaron down at the end of the table.
Hi, I'm Aaron Scully. I'm the uh permit tech, the planning side. So I do the minutes and communicate with most of you. Um, yeah. It's nice to be here. Nice to see everybody.
Uh, hi, everybody. Ryan Andrews, planning manager. Um, gotten to know most of you throughout the the years or for some of you, the the last few months, now we've just recently had, just so everybody's aware, with our new members, uh, we've had some educational sessions and and brought them in to talk to the staff. So we've all had a good chance to introduce ourselves and talk a little bit, which has been great.
I'm Lindsay Fields, the climate sustainability coordinator. I probably saw a few of you way back in like June twenty twenty three, when I came to present on um our status about our climate sustainability programs then. So it's good to see you all again. Good to see new faces. So excited to be here.
I'm Amy Bishop. Uh, this is my sixth and final year on the planning commission. Sorry, I missed the last couple meetings, so I didn't get to meet a lot of the newer faces, but uh, welcome to the commission and look forward to working with you for one more year.
I'm Carrie McMichael. Start of my second term, I guess, was our last meeting, so. So very grateful to be here and get to learn all the the codes and everything in and out. So, thank you.
Jeff Gadman. Fairly short on the planning commission, but in a prior life, I was recent city council. Excited to be a part of this group and look forward to what we can accomplish this year.
Spencer Zamen. This is my first time on the planning commission. I'm looking forward to seeing how we can improve our city and make it a more just equitable place where people can live, work, and play.
Kathy Redslaff, um, on my second term, like Eddie, so just a little sooner. I'm in the urban growth area, live in the urban growth areas, so try to bring some of those issues to light. Um, it's a great planning commission, awesome, but it's so lovely to see new faces because you guys will bring so much energy and so much enthusiasm. So I'm sad to see the old faces go, but love change, so.
Hi, Judy Doyle, and um I am happy to not be the newest person. Really happy to work with everyone here.
Um, I'm Tanya Moore. I'm new to the planning commission. I'm also in the urban growth area, and I'm just looking forward to bringing those issues and things forward.
Do I get to do an introduction again? Vanessa Dolby. I'm the new community economist. Oh, goodness.
I'm I'm Shepard. I'm a long-range planner. Um, and I'll be presenting later this evening. Okay, do we have anybody online?
Um, we do. Give me one second. It looks like Gail's having a bit of a problem getting on, but Gail will be here in a second. Um, we don't have anybody. So this is opportunity for public comment. We don't have any members of public here in the council chambers. It looks like we do have some members out in the audience. So if you'd like to address the planning commission and provide any comment, uh, this is your opportunity opportunity to do so. Uh, you can use the raise hand function of the webinar and we'll go ahead and bring you in so that you can make comment to the planning commission. Going once, going twice. I don't see that anybody has raised their hand. So I think at this point, it's safe to say we don't have any public comment.
All right, uh, commissioner, commission members reports. Does anybody have any ready for it? Yeah.
Yeah, I was, uh, I um went to Bill Bush's memorial on Saturday and it's so sad to know that some of our leaders have have are passing on, but uh it was really great to hear about all the different stuff that he did to make the city really great. And they were talking about his, what was his monument? Um, signs instead of the having all of these big uh billboards going through Lacey. And it's just amazing to think about the things that people have done, that it made the city a beautiful, you know, place to to live. So um, I was thinking about Virgil Clarkson, the roundabouts and all the different things. I guess it maybe might be their kind of legacies. But uh, I thought that was really amazing. And and it's also nice to hear that I hope that they're still passing, but the levies for the schools are passing. So it's really great when people are willing to kind of sacrifice and make sure that uh our kids and our and our families and our community has all the stuff that they need. So it's good to hear and hope that those keep going forwards.
Thank you. Yeah, Lacey and North Hurst School have had a longstanding deep relationship, and I'm really excited to see that continue. Anybody else? Hey, any department report?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Don't have a public hearing, was born a new business. Uh, Ryan, joint meeting debrief.
Yeah, so um wanted to provide some opportunity in the agenda to um debrief on the joint meeting. So the last time the planning commission met was on the the joint meeting. I know there were some members that were absent, so it might be a good way to kind of fill in some of the members that weren't at the meeting as well. As far as, you know, what what happened and and any major takeaways that you all might have had from the meeting from um, from my perspective, I thought the meeting went very well. Um, we did present the uh, well, usually what's the annual work program this year? This time it's the two-year work program um of comprehensive plan amendments, really reflects the work that we need to do around the comprehensive plan update. Um, but I, the the reason I thought it was so successful was I I think that the um it didn't feel so much like the the planning commission coming to a council meeting. It felt a little bit more interactive and a little bit more um, like, you know, we were, I think the mayor did a good job of of asking some questions that engaged the planning commission and provided some feedback. So that was really good. And it felt to me a little less like the planning commission was a guest at a council meeting, which that's the way it maybe it seemed a little bit in the past. It was a little bit more interactive. So um, you know, from my perspective, the the, so the the council adopted the work program without any changes was, which was really nice. But I did hear a lot about um a lot of focus again on affordable housing issues. That seemed to be a a common theme and and um so with that, turn it over to anybody else that wants to kind of give their feedback or impressions on the joint meeting and any any additional takeaways you might have had.
I really enjoyed the format. I liked that we were sitting every other, it kind of embedded there. And I liked that the mayor seemed so prepared for the conversation. Um, his questions were really purposeful and directed at um at us and gave us a a lot of opportunity to share what was important to us and what what we were interested in. So I thought it was a terrific meeting.
Yeah, and the council was extremely receptive to the notion that planning commission, there there is a snake while we're putting some comprehensive plan and uh was receptive to the idea of, you know, you have ideas, please bring them to us, but understand they're gonna be in the parking lot for a little while until we get this comprehensive plan done. I thought it went very, very well.
My apologies for missing. What do you think Ryan made for a different dynamic with it was more interactive and stuff? Is it something planning commission did or more just?
I think it was more along the lines of what the council did and specifically the mayor in engaging, kind of like what Jeff said, asking some key questions about, you know, what's the planning commission, like what are some hot topics? What's the planning commission seeing? And and I think that really helped kind of spur on some additional discussion. Um, having asked those questions, though, that like also like Jeff said, is that the answer kind of was, well, we can't get to a lot of other stuff right now because we have a such a large, you know, slate in front of us as far as the comp plan updates go. So uh I think that was that was a good message back to the council too, because I think sometimes the council gets maybe a little ahead of itself for thinking that planning commission can work on this, that, or the other when we have, when maybe they're not as aware that we have such a huge slate of other stuff to be working on. So I think there was a really good, you know, i- it it kind of set some level expectation there that I think was really good. I I also mentioned Daphne too. The the one thing um about the meeting was it wasn't just the planning commission. The planning commission was kind of the first on the agenda, but uh we also had, uh, it was followed by, so the the planning commission was left essentially, and and then the the parks board was next. And so the parks board got to hear the planning commission discussion. Parks board came in, kind of gave their annual work program. And then the, after them, it was the historic board. So the historic board gave their, it kind of like reported the last year and then their annual work program update as well. And so it was a good way to share a bunch of information. And so it wasn't just solely focused around the planning commission too. And so I think maybe that helped. So as some of the engagement, it wasn't just the planning commission, the council talking. It was all of the, well, all of them short of the the commission on equity. I think that was held in a separate meeting. But pretty much all of the boards and commissions were were present at that meeting. So it it felt a little bit more like that was, you know, kind of the topic of the night was the coordination with these boards rather than, you know, the our joint meeting in the past has just been the planning commission and the council meeting, which makes it really focused on those things that we're dealing with. But it was good that, you know, the council was engaged on the issues that span across multiple commissions for that evening.
Yeah, I think that dynamic probably helped with a lot of the the conversations that tend to go sideways when it's just the planning commission and the city council, because, I mean, they were sitting there mindful. They had two more boards to go through. They all want to get home because they've been working all day. So um that probably helped prevent a lot of the off-topic things.
A good format to follow for future meetings for.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, Lindsay, you're up.
Share screen and.
Okay. I'm Lindsay Fields, climate sustainability coordinator with City of Lacey. I'm here to talk about Soul Smart and specifically one um piece of uh code updates that we'll have later this year. Um, it's called the PZ one. It was a code review by the Soul Smart team that went through our solar permitting and coding um for the city and and made some suggestions about how we can update our coding and our codes to be um, so we don't have any codes that are restrictive of solar, but just to be more explicit and that we permit and we permit solar panels easily for our city. Um, but really quick, I'm just gonna walk you through what Soul Smart is. And so Soul Smart and getting a Soul Smart designation is actually called out in our Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. It's um, the other jurisdictions have got got, I think, Tomwater and Thurston County were designated last, at the end of last year, and Olympia has been designated. Um, so we'll kind of be the last jurisdiction to get designated. Um, but that's just kind of how we're doing code updates. Um, we've been working with them for the past, like, six months to get stuff together for this. But Soul Smart is just a um, I forget the office that it's through, but it's a, it's a no-cost technical and designation service through the federal government that govern, local governments can go through. Um, they can get technical assistance on how to make permitting easier for solar or get designated like we're trying to do. And and really getting a designation kind of some, like amplifies that we're very much in favor of folks going towards cleaner options for energy, making it easy for them to do that and not being so restrictive um and what we require of them to do that and and really making it as as easy as possible. They did get a new designation last year, platinum, um, but that requires that we have a solar project like installed on one of our buildings or in our community. We're not quite there yet, but hopefully in the next couple of years, we might be there. Um, it wouldn't be on this building, though, because I think installing solar on City Hall would be fairly difficult with all of our trees. But we do have um like the shop. Um, hopefully in the next couple of years after the comp plan is done, um, we'll start talking about um building decarbonization for the shop potentially and going through that process. And we'll have commerce money for it, but I'm getting off topic. Um, and so, so, so we're in that process now. Um, I'm working with Soul Smart to get a webpage created on our website, which just has all of our information in one place, makes it really easy updating a checklist for permitting solar. So basic suggestions about our checklist to make it easier. Um, it's already pretty easy. I think you can just get a permit over the counter for um installing solar. So it's not like we have this really expansive process you have to go through. Um, and so there's three level, there's four levels, but um we're looking at silver or gold. Um, and really, when we come back later this year with the code, so we're gonna roll a lot of code updates into a larger code package, I think, in the, like halfway through the year. Um, specifically for solar, um, and which will help us go after the gold designation. Right now, we're sitting in a silver designation. And so we have um, I'm presenting the zoning memo tonight, which will check this off the list. Um, our awesome permit techs have went through training or are going through training um to check this off. And then I haven't um, I haven't let Carlos know yet, but he's gonna go through inspection training to get this done. And then the solar landing page are way pretty easy to put together um and get that up. And then we'll we'll be done. And really how this works is you have different sections and different areas that you can get points. And then you submit all of your paperwork to the technical team. They go through it, make sure and verify it. And then they give you your designation depending on how many points you've amassed through this process. And so um we're in the, are we permitting inspection? Oh, I think we're in, yes. So the planning and zoning part, so we have uh a couple of codes. I think there's three different sections that we really need to update in order to um get designated. But the rest of them are just kind of suggestions that we could do. We could do all of them, or we could just do three of them. And so the other ones are like um government operations, uh, which include like education and outreach. Uh, can I move this?
Yeah. You know, just don't say stuff of anything.
Uh, community engagement. Um, and so are we, do we tell people about our solar, how easy it is? Are are they um, what kind of education engagement do we do around solar uh marketing and development? Uh, and so these are just kind of the um innovative action which is required for a platinum. So that'd be like a community solar project somewhere in the city of Lacey that we're um pushing or or helping um pay for as well. And then and then the government operations as well would be um if we've installed solar on like a local facility for one of our our buildings that we own. And so I'm gonna stop sharing. I'm gonna go over to the PZ one. Um, and should be pulled up. Share screen. Maybe not. So I might have to pull it up.
Yeah.
Open up a, oh, yeah, you know what? I can just go into my. I'm just gonna share this really quick. Don't um laugh at my filing system. It is very disorganized, but fortunately you can't see all of my files, so. Uh, PZ one, there we go.
I'm always a little horrified when somebody asks me to find the file.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Every now and then someone like sees my desktop and they're just kind of horrified because I'll just save step really fast to my desktop and then I don't go through it. So it's just like, files. Um, okay, so this is the PZ one, and this is what they, this is what we got back from Soul Smart and where they went through our codes specifically related to solar, gave us some um suggestions. And then also, you might see, sorry, I'm gonna scroll for a little bit. So if you get sick, I would look away for a second. I always like to phone that out. Um, okay, so like applicable Soul Smart credit, so PZ five. So we will have to update this one in order to get um a designation. And this has to do with uh roof-mounted accessory use solar. And so the code does not explicitly permit accessory use, although it's not, there's not a barrier to to getting um to getting that permit, doesn't make it as easy as possible is is how I talked through this with a Soul Smart person. And so um suggested language will be with the code update, roof-mounted solar energy systems are a permitted accessory use within all major zoning districts. Um, so subject to the following development standards. And so making sure it's in in line with development standards, but just that we're we're just calling it out in our codes that we allow rooftop solar in all of our major zoning. Um, and just making that very clear in our coding. Um, and I keep saying coding like we're um hackers, but in our code. Uh, and so PZ six as well is um the, it's relating to, the code does not exempt roof-mounted solar PV from height restrictions. And so even though there's not a barrier, I think there's language where we have some sort of height limitations to our solar, like how high they can be off of your roof. Um, and Soul Smart just uh recommends that there's no sort of height restrictions for that. Um, and so we'll have to update that as well in order to get, and I we have to update this one specifically if we want to go for our gold designation. Um, I don't think we have to update it for a silver designation. And so if that's something that we don't want to do, we we can totally still get designated through Soul Smart. Um, but these are just the suggestions they have in order for us to go after a gold designation. Um, and then the last one that's really important is this PZ seven here. Um, ensure the zoning ordinance permits small ground-mounted solar PV as an accessory use in at least one zoning district. And so just making it very clear in at least one zoning district that you can have solar or ground-mounted solar um and and not just roof-mounted solars. And so again, these are suggestions by their technical team that they looked through our codes. If we'd like to go after a gold designation, we'll need to make these improvements to our codes um this year. But if not, we can still get designated. We still have to go go after a Soul Smart designation. Um, and so one part of the, oh, yeah, there's PZ eight as well. And so there's, I think, around four codes that we'll have to update for um a gold designation. And again, this is getting a Soul Smart designation is also an action in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan that we'll be able to kind of check off the box. Um, it was one of our sustainability initiatives this year as well. And so, yep, and and really what I'm here just to let you all know this, because I have to submit a agenda that I presented this to our planning commission so that you are aware, and that'll check off the box for um one of the requirements for a Soul Smart designation as well. And so with that, I'm gonna ask if you all have any questions or concerns or comments.
So just tonight, we're not asking the planning commission to do any action. It's just to review the information. So you're you're provided the the staff report with the the report that has been shown on the screen here. And so really, there's some minor, very minor kind of technical aspects that would push us from a silver to a gold level. And I think that the city is trying to uh achieve that gold level. It's really, um, you know, it's kind of almost like a branding thing. It's a promotional thing that, you know, we can put on our website. We can get a plaque at our our front counter and those kinds of things and just shows that the city has, you know, a commitment when it comes to permitting and policies that we promote solar energy in our community. And so it doesn't cost us anything. It's it's, you know, it's, and the benefits the city from a promotional standpoint. So Lindsay will be coming back in the the coming months with the formal code amendments for you to move forward um and review. But at this point, we're just kind of giving you an idea of what this audit had to say. And we'll bring those those specific code um changes to you for review at a future date.
So are jurisdictions that maybe have like gold or platinum or something, are they getting um, and the the goodwill and the positive energy about that? Um, are they getting more people to take them up on it? Is it, is it making a difference in the use of solar power in those jurisdictions? Because I do, I like the idea, but it's just, there is some inherent cost with your time and money thing. And so I'm just like, you know, is there something that we're gonna, you know, we can maybe measure at the end?
Yeah, I mean, we could, I mean, we can do it at the city of Lacey. Um, we could just see how many we get before this. And then if, I I think it would come down to advertising. And so when we get designated, we also will be able to advertise our designation, um, which will be like community engagement. And so we'll be pushing solar a lot more um, or or at least putting it out there a lot more than I think we do now. Um, I'm not sure how many people are aware how easy it is to get permitted for solar in the city, in in the city. Um, and so, but that's a really great question. Um, I could ask Olympia. Um, and they've been designated for a couple of years, I think. So they probably have some, they're they're gold.
They're gold.
Yeah, yeah.
Could be like our, we're Tree City on some of our our street signs or something. You could do something like that. And and some sort of something that the public could catch on to and just say, hey, I live in this great place. We're Tree City. We're we're Soul Smart, you know, kind of thing.
Right.
Something like that. Is that?
Absolutely. Yep, yep. We could have a, we, I think we get a plaque and we can put it on our website that we're um Soul Smart gold designated, which just means it's really easy to get um solar installed through, at least with the permitting process at the city of Lacey. And so we'll be, we'll be able to post that around the city and on our website as well. And in the, at the permitting desk as well, just to let folks know. But yes.
So once you get the designation, does that open up a portal to grants from the Department of Energy that we can to our citizens?
Um, I don't think so. Um, although getting designated does show um, when we're talking about like grants and we're talking about solar, um, getting designated does show our commitment to our community to go solar. And so we can include that in grant information that we're, we went through this process, we updated codes, like we make it explicitly make it very easy for you to get. Um, and so we can use that as a package as well to get more grant funding if that's what we're gonna do. Um, especially when we're talking about, like, if in the next couple of years, um, there's definitely still some work that needs to be, that needs to happen from the state level around community solar projects. And so um, when we're talking about things like uh group. And so um, when we're talking about things like uh, group purchasing solar, um, there's some work that needs to happen, but in the next couple of years, we can, if, if we wanna go after funding to do a group solar purchase within the city, we could say look, we, we're Soul Smart designated, we went through this process, like we're, we're really ready to do this and, and use that for better.
I think the best tour should include some solar projects.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be awesome to have a solar, a, a solar array somewhere and we could stop and be like, yeah. Although I think there, there might be one bill that's still alive, one did get killed this year. Um, that's a very hard word to say in a planning commission instead. Um, but there Olympia Solar is doing some work around trying to get this, the state to change some of the laws around um, community purchasing of solar. And so like community solar projects, you, there, there's different ways to do it. You can install solar in your roof, you can have your own, you're creating your own energy. But you can also, um, in some states and in some places, you can buy into a community solar project. So you're like buying credits. Um, which then come off of your bill, but there's still some work that needs to happen around the equity portion of like right now, I think it's only a private utility can own that. And so they're, um, they really want it to be that communities can own that. And then, but, so then there's like some hard stuff for like how we work with PSC if the community owns it, um, and get that taken off the bill. So there's still some work, but I'm hopeful in the next couple of years, we'll be able to do a community solar project. And then we could go after a platinum designation as well, but that's, that's just a fun thing.
So I have a question. And, and I get that um, this is about setting the infrastructure to facilitate um, people installing this. Um, taking a step back, is there a part where there's an educational aspect? Um, because I think it's counterintuitive to think of the Pacific Northwest and being s- efficient using solar energy. And there's probably a lot of education that people could benefit from saying, we know we're not Florida, we're not Hawaii, but there's still a huge benefit here. Is there a piece of that?
Yeah, absolutely. And that'll be on our website as well. So it won't just be like how we permit, how easy it is to get a permit for solar, it'll go through. Why should you go solar in Washington? Like, yes, we're not Florida, but um, a lot of folks I've talked to that has solar, I mean, it drastically reduces their bill in the winter. And in the summer, spring and mostly the fall, like they don't have an energy bill because they're, you know, generating en- energy for the future. Um, and so, yeah, so that portion will be on there as well, like education around just what is solar?
And why, why, why should I do it here?
Yeah, exactly.
Something that would be very impactful is um, the payback um, figures. That would explain why it, it's, it really will pay back. It's not just good for the environment, but you will you know, see a return on your investment in this amount of time.
Yeah.
So interesting trivia here for you. So when the solar companies are determining the viability of a solar project, what they use is what they call sundays. That doesn't mean sunny day. What it means is the amount of days where enough uh, UV is coming down to charge the batteries. Germany right now gets about forty to forty-five percent of their electricity from solar. And they're at the same latitude we're and we get about the same number of sundays a year, which is about two hundred thirty-six, two hundred forty sundays a year. So I know it doesn't seem like it, especially looking at today, but uh, yeah, it's very viable in this area.
I have neighbors who are solar and they're, in their second year now and are generating enough electricity throughout the summer that they're banking hours for the winter. Um, so they essentially don't have a, an energy bill throughout the whole year because they're
I mean, conventional wisdom used to be like a ten year payback. I just wonder if that's gotten any better.
Well, so what are the drawbacks? So there's, over the last four years, there's been serious hindrances to adopting solar. One of those has been the supply chain. Getting the electronic chips out of China and, and the Southeast Asian countries was almost impossible for two years, um, because the demand is so high and they're all spoken for. For the last year and a half, it's been interest rates. Uh, you know, sure, put a ten, twelve thousand dollar solar project on your roof, but you're, you're paying a lot of interest to get the loan to do that. And so I think probably about the end of the year, we'll start to see interest rates drop a little bit more and you might see a little bit more of that pick up.
And it's not just the one-time cost. I think there's maintenance that has to happen periodically on the um, system. Now, that's good.
Well, thank you, Lindsay.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, I do have one last question.
Yes.
So if you get like a silver designation, you can upgrade later.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Um, we've talked about just going ahead with some of this stuff and getting designated silver. And then we can come back when those codes get updated and say, you know, we, we'd like to go after the next step, here's the paperwork for that. So it might be that we, we do that. Um, it'll, it'll also depend on just the time, uh, or like my time to, to do it. So especially with comp plan stuff, you know. Uh, yeah, we'll see what happens. Might just be faster to just do it all at one time than having to come back. But you can definitely upgrade your designation.
I'm glad we helped you move it forward.
Yes, yes, thank you all. I appreciate it. Yes, send that agenda to my person and get that checked off.
Well, thank you for your presentation next.
Absolutely. Awesome. It's great to see you all.
Okay, the next item is going into a discussion about neighborhood commercial districts. And uh, so we've got a public hearing for March thirteenth. Um, so that evening, I'm actually gonna be out of town, but I can attend via Zoom. No, I can attend via Zoom. But I would ask, can that public hearing be at the beginning of the meeting? Because I'm only available until about seven.
Yeah, for sure. Uh, the, just the way the agenda works out already, it's towards the beginning. It's right after the department reports, the first thing.
Okay.
Basically that the planning commission does. So we'll make sure that it's the first thing on the agenda.
Thank you. Um, so as we begin this discussion, I just want to remind everybody that we all have input into this and we all have very, some strong feelings about how we feel this should look. We put a lot of work into this before I even got on the planning commission. I appreciate the work that's been done to this point. But I do wanna say, as we discuss, I would like everybody to have the opportunity to give input. Make a comment or, or, or an opinion. And then I wanna give everybody else a chance to chime in. And then we'll just kind of go through that way so that everybody's voice gets a chance to be heard tonight. So we'll let Ryan kick this off.
I'm actually gonna shoot it over to Hans.
Pass it right over to me. Um, so I did pass these out at the very beginning. Um, we're actually gonna be using a platform called Mentimeter uh, this evening. Uh, which is where my slides are gonna be, but then also there's some kind of straw polling that takes place uh, within it. Um, so either on your uh, tablets or phones or any other uh, internet connected device that you may have, um, you'll be able to join uh, the survey and then follow along with the slides. Uh, I'll also be presenting them up here on the main screen, so hopefully that'll be big enough for everybody to see. But then there will be a few survey questions uh, throughout the process where you can uh, provide feedback directly uh, onto your tablets or phones or what, what have you.
So has everybody gotten on?
Yeah, that's what I see.
Yes.
Yeah, right now it's mostly a blank screen.
Yes, do that now.
Sorry.
Always have all the coolest gadgets here.
Safe spot is gonna be for that window, but we'll find out. Great. Perfect. So yeah, and then whenever you guys have made it in, uh, there's a little thumbs up thing in the corner there, if you can hit that just so you can know if you're, you're there or not. I might have eight.
Yeah.
Perfect.
That's what play a lot.
You're allowed to practice based for the first part. I have to kick you off, so. Um, so yeah, tonight we're talking about neighborhood commercial districts. Uh, this should, most of what we're talking about tonight be a refresher for everybody. Um, but we are gonna just jump right into it. Um, this part is just a trial run to show you kind of how surveying works. The first few questions are just for fun. Um, but yeah, it looks like we have nine players, so we'll get going. Um, and there's no time related points on these. But first question is, what is the most popular gift for Valentine's Day in spirit of uh, where we are tonight? And then we have eight votes in, and these are all pulled from YouGov just for the record, so. Um, but yeah, correct answer is a card. So uh,
Wrong answer.
So I don't know if you've done all of your respective dropping for this evening, but you can say whatever.
You right did the right thing.
Uh, and this is for twenty twenty-two, so I don't know, maybe things changed a little bit. Uh, yeah, moving on. The next one. Everybody's in. So what percent of people think Valentine's Day is a real special holiday? And I didn't do the phrasing on that, so. Don't give me a hard time for that one. But uh, that's a YouGov poll at its finest. I think we have six. Everyone has voted. All right. Thirty percent was the correct answer.
Is that you again, Karen?
All right.
Oh wait, is this supposed to be anonymous?
I deleted the uh, scoring sheet at the end, so you all can find it.
Thank you, thank you.
And then the last question. What percent of people prefer President's Day over Valentine's Day in the spirit of, we actually have two holidays within a week of each other, so. All right. And the correct answer is twenty-one percent. So there you have it. Yeah, so that's just a practice run of how Mentimeter works. Um, we're gonna have a couple of survey questions later that are a little bit more specific to neighborhood commercial districts. Um, but that just gives you a rundown of how that is. So I'll let you know when those ones come up and they won't be timed, so we'll be good. Moving. Only I'm gonna know your scores, so I'm gonna choose to release those or not. Um, yeah, so just as a really just quick rundown of what we're hoping to accomplish for today. Um, uh, confirm general direction. A lot of this is gonna be recap as I can initially reference, but just a summary of everything that I've kind of worked through to date. Um, next one is review alternatives, and that's specific to gas stations and ground floor residential. Those really are the two topics that have received the most attention throughout this process and still have some elements uh, or details, I should say, that haven't been really kind of finalized or we haven't really kind of arrived at a kind of conclusion yet with those topics. So we'll do a little bit more discussion on those. Uh, and then part of that'll be the straw polling. We did an example of that, but we'll do some more straw polling uh, specific to both gas stations and then ground floor residential separately, not at the same time. Um, and then from there, we'll take all of the information and feedback that we've collected tonight and use that to inform our initial draft. And then we will uh, release that to the community at large. And again, this is an initial draft, uh, when we release it to the community, that is just a first look at uh, the draft. Uh, it's not a final draft by any stretch, uh, but it's just an opportunity for them, the community at large, to kind of look at what we've done to date and where we're kind of headed and then provide feedback on that back at the uh, the um, public uh, hearing on the thirteenth. So, yeah. This part is gonna be a recap section. Um, in the code itself today, there are only two different building sizes that are permitted. Uh, through our discussions that we've had previously, we've uh, moved to a little bit more of a dynamic or kind of responsive uh, range with a couple of different subcategories. So instead of the single use or multi-use, uh, we have single commercial, multi-commercial, multi-family, mixed use. And then we also have two designations, one for a full service grocery and then also preschools that didn't really seem to cleanly fit in the other categories. Um, that should all be relatively familiar, but again, this is just a recap of that. Um, and then on the building height side of things, uh, currently I think it's at thirty-five feet, which in practice, best case scenario gives you a two-story building, but most of the time is really a one-story building. And all of our districts that do have some level of development in them today, they're all one-story buildings. Uh, so based on feedback from the community and looking at really the intent of what these districts are and kind of how they can be successful, uh, looking at the potential to increase that height, uh, a little bit to accommodate the potential for a three-story building. And then also with the addition of additional uh, residential units, uh, that has a potential to increase up to a four-story building. It's kind of the, the sweet spot as far as the feedback that we've heard and the direction that we've received so far. And that's part of the, the draft today. And then a caveat to that, um, a couple of different things, uh, stepped back above thirty-five feet. So thirty-five feet being the current maximum. So anything that's constructed above the current maximum within these districts would have that step back component into them. So if they're adjacent, and this is, sorry, this is specific to a single family residential unit. So anytime that one of these structures would be constructed next to a single family residence, there are additional requirements, requirements on how softening that boundary takes place. So that includes things like vegetation, includes things like uh, height step backs. And uh, also kind of upper story windows and things like that. We're not gonna go into too much detail on that, but it is just kind of that softening of that edge or boundary when it's shared with a single family residential. And then one thing that we talked about a couple uh, planning commission meetings ago was roof, rooftop gathering spaces. And as we shift into that kind of maybe three or four-story building with the potential for maybe a garden or a, some kind of gathering space on top, making sure that again, those are respectful and responsive to the potential for a neighboring, single family residence. Um, and kind of what that privacy looks like and that dynamic there. So uh, additional kind of code recommendations that include kind of increased privacy in those instances when they do take place. And then a couple other uh, ones here, commercial weather protection. So increasing um, the weather protection in front of these buildings. So when they are fronting on the street, that there is some kind of awning or weather protection there to provide a little bit more reprieve from the elements that people are out and about and kind of engaging in these districts. Uh, that one, and then the commercial windows uh, is all things that we pulled from our woodland district. So it's code that we already currently implement uh, within other locations within the community. This is just uh, continuing that into our neighborhood commercial districts as well.
Why are we banning reflective or tinted glass?
Yeah, so the discussion around that one was that it's, it's increasing the visibility uh, from the street into businesses and back again. And our goal is to really kind of create a inviting space that there's really kind of that community element and community interaction. And when tinted glass has been used or opaque class, that doesn't really encourage that uh, visibility between locations, there's not as much engagement there, so.
Doesn't that also preclude a lot of businesses from taking up residence there, like therapy offices, a lot of medical facilities? You could have situations where you have maybe private gathering spaces, things like that, where privacy may be a concern, not to mention the solar and the heat um, reflect, reflecting capabilities. I used to professionally install window film. There, so I have some really specific ideas and I've had a lot of use case scenarios put in front of me where that building was taken over and now proprietor can't do the things they need because it's either getting baked by the sun and they're making baked products or the butcher shops, like things like that. I used to install a lot of blackout film and select things because their products would be getting destroyed by direct sun. So uh, my concern is that instead of just having a, like a blanket prohibition, because there's a lot of also green elements to that, as well as anti-graffiti or vandalism protection. So that we might be worth exploring a little more in depth about some of those alternatives that could be available. Because there's a lot of ones that appear functionally clear that have a lot of those performance qualities as well, as you, complete UV blocking as well as heat reduction that are completely, completely transparent. Um, so just bringing some of that professional knowledge into this, I think that might be a little heavy-handed. And we could easily, I think, write a language that says that as long as you're not below this certain visibility of this light threshold and seventy is, is a perfect compromise, that's what I used to sell to everyone because it, you get the performance benefits, you get almost no visual change in, in terms of either visibility in or out of the windows. And you, you get a lot of heat reflection in the summertime as well, so um, they call it the Washington Hill, but.
Yeah, uh, I think that's a great point. Really the intent behind that section of code was to increase that visibility. Yeah, I think that's a great point, really the intent behind that section of code was to increase that visibility. And this was actually borrowed from a woodland district, it's just kind of the language that's currently in there. But if there's a better way to still kind of maintain that kind of connection to and from the street, but also offering some of that, I think that's, that's a great point, something we can explore. It is just specific to the frontage of the building, so one of the three sides, so it's not the interior of the building by any means. And this is also something that we saw duplicated in a lot of different of our example districts that we looked at, as far as where we were getting code from and what folks were identifying as their ideal versions of these districts. But yeah, if there's a better way to, kind of word that, that still accommodates that, but maintains that visibility, I think that that's a, a great option.
Yeah, when we, when we were coming up with the woodland code, one of the reasons we did that was because the human element, right? I mean, one of the reasons nobody uses their sidewalks is because there's no psychological barrier between where you're walking and where this traffic is coming by you. And that's where the planters come in. And the idea with this was hav- having that human connection to the buildings. Because if it is reflective glass, or it is heavily tinted glass, all of a sudden, now you've just got people walking past the wall. You really feel uncomfortable doing that, and that's, that's where that element came from.
Yeah, definitely, some of the feedback that we've heard is that we really do want to create that kind of pedestrian, human scale, human space that is separate from the road, these districts kind of in character are supposed to be more pedestrian-oriented, more bicyclists, more kind of foot traffic oriented. So really kind of creating a space that doesn't just accommodate, but feels comfortable to that type of traffic and that user of that space, so. Yeah, maybe, maybe we can chat a little bit about if there's better language that still kind of creates that, but maybe it's something in the middle that, that doesn't, isn't quite so restrictive, but still kind of accomplishes the goal of what's behind there. And then, the last one is front setbacks, so within our current code, within neighborhood commercial districts, it's ten feet, so maintaining that based on our discussions that we've had. But instead of making that a minimum, making that a maximum, so it's still kind of that target zone, and then have conditions in there, fifteen feet to accommodate outdoor seating, pedestrian-oriented gathering spaces, or ground floor residential uses, operating under the assumption that that is something that we are gonna move forward with. Currently in our code right now, there's no ground floor residential uses permitted, but if they become something that is permitted, the same setbacks for residential uses may not necessarily be a good fit compared, based on what's the commercial setbacks are. I said that very weirdly. But yeah, what's good for commercial isn't necessarily good for residential, is the takeaway there. So making a little bit more of accommodation for that. And then, the last page on recap is design elements, so right now there are no limitations on hours of operation. One of the things that came out of the outreach that we did is putting at least a starting point for hours of operation, still pretty accommodating. And the site planner review team does have the opportunity to adjust that based on the specific use. But at least it starts with a range, instead of having it be open-ended, so it's not to say that that's not possible, but at least without going through that process and really evaluating that specific use, at least there's some boundaries on what that hours, those hours of operation can be, and that really gets back to businesses operating in close proximity to residential areas, and being mindful of both of those types of use. Site continuity, so again, when talking about increasing the amount of residential uses within these districts, making sure that it's one kind of cohesive space, so it's not a hard line of here's the commercial section, here's the residential, and they might have fences or other blockades between them. Any, any districts that's developed, they want it to be developed intentionally with both residential and commercial in mind, and not kind of have it be too many districts within one designation, so it's just a cohesive design, is kind of what the language is there. And then, density bonuses, we've talked about these previously, but things like parking placement, so either on-street parking, above, or internal to the site, or below grade, things like that can increase kind of your density bonus. Pedestrian-oriented spaces by creating plazas and kind of nice gathering spaces and like and other features like that, there's an opportunity to increase densities of the construction that's on-site, and then affordable housing, and there's a question mark on that one, because we'll visit that one later, but that's, that's a question that council brought up on their, their last meeting when they reviewed all of these topics, and we'll, we'll get to that whole bit. Any questions on kind of the design elements recap stuff?
I did. So I'm sorry, Hans, if you said this or if it was a meeting I missed, so where did the operating hours come from?
So that actually came out of one of the discussions around Meridian Market primarily, where there was an opportunity to request. Gas stations, as it's currently written, is listed as a conditional use. And so, there's opportunity to place potential conditions on use that's conditional of, conditional of getting it approved, and one of the discussions that came out of that was operating hours of the gas station. And while I don't think they actually took advantage of it, specific to that destination, it was a subject that came up, so. These hours are just a starting point, but instead of just having no operating hours listed and pretty much anything's allowed based on site planner review, just starting with a range. And then, based on use, that can be adjusted up or down. So maybe that's even reduced or increased, if it's maybe like a twenty-four hour grocery store or something like that.
Yeah, I just, I'm wondering, you know, is it restrictive or something, because it's mostly, I'm assuming about, you know, traffic or noise or light. So those are the things that, that they're wanting to avoid near residential, which I respect. So it's not so much, it's, it's okay for a coffee shop to be open at five-thirty, but I don't want them to be blaring music out the door or something like, is, is Kennedy? So, okay, so I, do we need to be specific about the hours, or is it more specific about what is not allowed beyond those hours, maybe?
Yeah, and the hours, by listing instead of hours, it gives a starting point. And it's, it's, then we can adjust based on that, but at least it gives like, that's the standard understanding unless you go through that re-rub process, and based on the use, it makes sense to operate in a different set of hours. But that way, it's just the, anytime that one of these districts is developed, that's just the standard. Yeah, I don't know if I'm getting your question right.
No, no, that's fine, and so the, the review process would be like the city and stuff, right?
That might make sense as a use that where we bump those hours a little bit, this is just the unless somebody comes in and is like, hey, these hours really don't work for my type of business, that's just the standard, and that's what the requirement is gonna be for operating within one of these districts, but if a coffee shop, for example, were to come in and they say, we really need to open at five AM, you might look at that type of use, look at the traffic that's generated from it, how bright are their exterior lights? Do they play music or anything else that may be associated with that, and based on, and it gives us the opportunity to set some additional kind of requirements on that use, so no loud music at five in the morning or that kind of thing. Just gives us a little bit more control, or a little bit more opportunity to participate in that decision-making process than if we didn't have any range.
No, and like, so we could say like generally operate within the range of this, but other, you know, outside this range would need consideration and.
Yeah, yeah, the business would need to specifically ask for that range, and then provide kind of justification, and then that gives us as staff an opportunity to kind of discuss with them how they can still, or how they can operate within that proposed range, but do it in a way that's mindful of the neighborhoods surrounding it. Good so far? Alright, I think now is when we get into the fun stuff. So gas stations has been one of the big kind of drivers behind why we even started this project to begin with. Our current code lists it as a conditionally permitted use. Within our districts today, there are four, two, oh, one that's physically in the city right now, one that has been permitted and under construction being Meridian Market, and then we have two in our urban growth area, for a total of four in the near future. And I am gonna get into some example districts and community feedback, and then we'll do some alternative polling, but I did pull a clip from the January ninth meeting with city council where they specifically discussed this topic. And instead of me kind of trying to parrot that back to you, I hope I can actually just click on this and it'll take us right to that section. Now that is playing on my, I really hope it doesn't play on my computer. But I hope it plays on that one. We can find out. That's not what I wanted. Need to look on my screen too, it was deleted up there. Maybe you will be able to play. That link is helpful, because it takes us right to the, we don't need to listen to the three and a half hour meeting in order to get there. We can do this.
Did you change it or email?
Has anybody told me, you know, if anybody actually built a gas station? I mean, because I mean, it's got two, right, because you've got a car on the inside, so that's four cars. And I don't, can't think of any gas station that's small.
One of the reasons we wouldn't just outright prohibit gas stations from future development is that if one of the existing spots needed to do substantial renovations, then if it was simply违反 the rules, they wouldn't qualify for something that you'd already been, so if we create this limitation until fueling, two fueling stations, does that impact if gas stations want to do substantial redevelopment, will they actually have to shrink?
That, that could, because, because one of the things you create a ground for, that goes back to looking at various this location, knowing the commercial locations, but the context, so.
Yeah, I have a real problem with that, because when you're encouraging that, is it never to make any other use? Never reinvesting in that property, if they've got four fueling stations now, it's not gonna go down to two, which means if building becomes dilapidated, they're never going.
If you look at this site here, this neighborhood commercial site is distinctly different in context than some of the other sites that we have in our.
Well, and that's why we maybe need to look at specific sites. That's why I think we should maybe, when you look at specific sites in this circumstance, and current allowed uses in that site might be different than other, other ones.
Yeah, man, I'm okay with this, except for the idea of the existing ones, I'm fine with it, a new one wants to operate. This park is a new one. That eliminates any new one anyway, but the existing ones need to do, need your renovation. Triggers the new code, that's a problem.
We go back to the bottom floor residential, possibly the, that have a map.
We're actually gonna pick up there later, in a little bit, so that'll be fun. Let me share my screen again. Too many windows going on. There you guys are. What did I do here? Okay. So, yeah, I did want to share that, it does touch on a couple of different topics that we're gonna review as part of our polling, but I just did want to give you that background. As part of that, I do want to reiterate that I want your guys' opinions. This initial recommendation is gonna be from you, so I want to be clear on that, and I want to make sure that that is reflected in the first draft that rolls out. And then ultimately, when we make a recommendation on a draft code to the council, I want that to be from you guys, so wanted to share that information, and we'll discuss those kind of elements that they were referencing there in a little bit. But, one of the things that we did throughout this process was ask the community for example districts, and those example districts are ideal versions or kind of future projections of what these, our current districts could be. And we, we, after kind of coming through all of, there's like a hundred and fifty different locations, but there were seven that kept being referenced by multiple people, so we kind of used those as our baseline and kind of pulled a lot of code and examples from those districts, and looked at ways to implement that within our districts. So looking at gas stations through the lens of those example districts that the community kind of identified as what they'd like ours to be in the future. I broke it down into three different categories, one being permitted, which was DuPont, the Wildwood, which is like the Vicks Pizzeria, Spuds, Lucky Lunchbox, I think is in there. Fairhaven up in Bellingham, and then Bridgeport, which is University Place, kind of their downtown area. Those are all permitted locations that were identified by the community of their ideal versions of what these districts could be, not to say that necessarily the gas station component of any one of those districts was it, but just as an example. And then, Point Ruston was the only one that listed gas stations as an accessory use, so as a standalone use, they're not permitted, but if it's connected to some type of other use that is permitted in that zone, then gas stations could be a potential use, the example being grocery stores. So if a grocery store is in that district, then a gas station as an accessory to the grocery store could be permitted, but not otherwise. And then, prohibited, we have the Proctor District up in Tacoma, and then Briggs Village. Briggs Village was referenced a couple of times, and that one's a little bit different, because it is kind of a village, so it has a lot of different components, it doesn't cleanly translate to a specific zoning designation, because there's a lot going on there, but specifically the area around the Tap House, there's an ice cream shop in there, a couple of different commercial units, I think there's a coffee shop drive-through. That's typically what folks were referencing when they were talking about Briggs Village as their example. So that's just a breakdown of the example districts. And then, community feedback, so we did do some pretty robust feedback or outreach as part of this process. And then, there were kind of three different levels to this, we never specifically asked about gas stations, we never, gas stations weren't listed. We asked, what types of uses do you want to see, what types of uses do you not want to see, how can we improve these districts? But never did we kind of lead any of our questions by identifying any specific use. That said, I looked through all of our feedback that we did receive and looked for all references to gas stations or Meridian Market specifically, and summarized those in this kind of circle chart that you have here. So looking at instances where gas stations were identified within the comment section, and this is without any prompting, there's somebody who's providing a comment, and they decided to talk about gas stations. And also in reference to Meridian Market, large consensus is that's not something that folks were looking for. That's pretty understandable, that's really where this process started. It's a lot of the motivation behind all the outreach that we did. There is some folks that said it depends, which is kind of that some column. There were a few folks that referenced grocery stores and gas stations in the same comment that they were providing, and talking about needs and how those needs can be addressed, and then, two people said yes. All in all, not surprising, I think that that's pretty what we would have expected going into that before that question was ever even asked. And then we took a step back, so looking just north of I-5, so that was one of the discussions that council specifically was kind of talking about. Maybe there's some kind of north-south potential split option as far as where gas stations are allowed and where they're not. So excluding all references to Meridian Market specifically, but still looking at comments that are in reference to locations in north of Interstate five, what does that breakdown look like? And we do see that there is a transition, so there's still a pretty vocal no column there forty-eight percent of the comments that kind of met that criteria of talking about gas stations and locations north of I-5. But we do see it's not as kind of a polar response anymore. There's a, still just a very few that say yes or some, but then there's a lot more discussion of gas stations and grocery stores in the same comment, and again, we never specifically asked about grocery stores or gas stations, so this is unprompted feedback and just kind of the topics that it's covering. And then the last one is general comments, so comments that didn't have anything to do with specific locations north of I-5 or locations or Meridian Market. So these are just other unprompted general conversation questions. And again, we see about fifty percent say no, gas stations are not a good fit in these districts, but again, it seems the farther away that we move from Meridian Market, there's, there is some kind of nuance to it, and a lot of people are saying maybe it depends, or it's based on other factors as well, and maybe it's, yeah, so, so closer we get to Meridian Market, stronger the, the feedback goes. No, and then the more that we move away from it, there's, there's more ambiguity there, or more it depends kind of statements and comments that we received. Alright, I am going to jump on us again here, I'm gonna try to show some maps of these different examples, so really, there's been in the past. of these different examples. So really, there's been, in the past, three or four different approaches to gas stations that we've kind of discussed in some level of detail. One is just blanket prohibiting them. One is not within 1.5 miles of another gas station, and then one is that north-south split, and doesn't make sense to maybe have some districts that are where it's permitted and where they're not. And that, I feel like is best illustrated in a map, so I'm going to see if I can bring up a map of this without breaking too many things here. Possibly. I am looking at a map, but it doesn't appear to be there. New share. Hey, there's Matt. All right, the white outline is city of Lacey boundaries as they currently are today. I apologize for how small this is. It's a big area, so there's not a great way to talk about all of these locations, same time without kind of doing this. By nature, neighborhood commercial districts are located around the periphery of the city. They really fill the gaps of what's left behind after we look at all of our kind of more general commercial zones. These really are out on the edges, so that's kind of why you see kind of a group down here and then a group up top here. And then out here, these three locations, and my cursor's mouse is delayed when I'm looking at that, so that's confusing to me. Yeah, so we have four locations out in the urban growth area. We have this one here, we have this one here, we have this one down here, and then we have one all the way up here. So we have four locations out there that are neighborhood commercial districts, and then we have eight that are within the current city boundary. So we have three to the north, and then we have five to the south, which are down here. Of those locations, four of them either will have in the very short term or currently have a gas station on them. I need to look at my own screen. So this one down here has a gas station already, this one already over here has a gas station already, this one over here has a gas station already, and this one up here is Meridian Market, so in the near future, we anticipate that it will have a gas station. And the reason that I call these locations out and why this is important is that when we're creating code, we don't want to immediately ban or outlaw uses that are already in place today. That creates really some difficult gymnastics from an implementation side of things, where we have to, when, if they came in for a permit or looking to do anything associated with that site, and that is no longer a permitted use, then they're kind of forced into a situation where they're not necessarily able to do a lot of those upkeep or maintenance related projects that they may otherwise be able to if it was either a conditionally use or a permitted use. So trying to come up with code that both recognizes our existing conditions as they are, but then also guides these districts in a way that is beneficial and in line with the community goals for the future. So one of the alternatives that was talked about is a north-south split of Interstate five. I'm moving my mouse up and along it here. So potentially treating these three districts different than the rest of them to the, to the south down here. That was one that was pushed primarily forward by the council. We did talk about it at one of our meetings. I don't remember at this point when that was anymore, but kind of the consensus is that, and I'm paraphrasing here, so this is where, I encourage you guys to correct me if I'm misremembering it, that there's a preference for an approach that's kind of applied evenly across all the districts, and trying to do a north-south fix is kind of more of a stopgap and doesn't, it's not as intuitive as it could be, I guess.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, so twelve neighborhood commercial districts in totality, correct?
Correct.
How many are developed?
Some quick mental.
And four of the developed ones are gas stations.
Three currently, four counting Meridian Market.
And we do have several that are not developed, so.
Correct. We have.
In totality, a third of them have gas stations, and then of the developed ones, that's even a higher percentage, correct?
Yes.
I thought that there was discussion, like of the way the code was written, or the suggested code is written, that due to the proximity of existing gas stations, those other ones could never develop a gas station. Was that accurate or not?
Yeah, so this, I'm going to toggle this on here. So this, the orange circles that you see now are 1.5 mile rings around existing gas stations, and these are existing gas stations within neighborhood commercial districts. The potential approach that we had talked about is not actually specific to neighborhood commercial districts, so that gas station could be located anywhere. Just for illustration purposes, I dropped the rings around existing stations within neighborhood commercial districts. And that actually encompasses all locations except this Union Mills location that has like a mini mart kind of grocery store in there and some other commercial uses. But there are, I think, three or four different gas stations on Martin Way here that would put that within that 1.5 mile range. So that 1.5 mile language would effectively cover all of our different neighborhood commercial districts while still accommodating existing ones. So really, if we were to go in that route, and we'll have some polling on this in a second, so might be getting a little ahead of ourselves here. By going in that route, it would effectively accommodate existing ones while limiting that as a use in any of the other districts unless one of the existing ones went away, that would then create kind of a pocket that's not currently in existence today. So that would be the 1.5 mile approach. Any other questions on these maps? So I have them up. Happy to zoom around or answer any other.
I'm sorry, just, just for clarity on that, so to your point, which I think is a good one, you know, that we have the, these gas stations in these neighborhood commercial districts, we have a large percentage, at least a third already, in all of the neighborhood commercial districts. And unless we did something different, then we're already at a third of them are gas stations.
Correct.
And some are not developed, so we don't know. They're basically nothing.
Yeah, I think there are three sites that I can think of right now that are fully undeveloped. Some of them are partially developed, so maybe it's a larger site and half of it has some form of development on it, so there's still some development potential. But there are three that I can think of right now that only are completely undeveloped.
So four of nine have gas stations.
But, but the, one point is that if we go the one and a half mile mitigation route, that would not be an option in any of the others.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the math as far as your point about do we want, do we want a consistent philosophy throughout or not?
Right.
And I was, the math is suggesting that four of nine currently have gas stations.
Four of twelve.
Four of twelve.
Four of nine that are developed.
Correct, or partially developed. Some of them are like.
I just was trying to clarify.
Right.
The whole entire.
Well, across the street, there's the farm, which has, I think, nine or 10 different businesses inside of it.
Oh, that's part of the same.
That's part of that same.
That's where I get my hairstyle.
I was just trying to marry some of the pieces in my head.
For sure. And, yeah.
Can I go, can I go back to the one and a half mile thing? I might just be confused. So the, the idea behind that is so that the existing gas stations would still be permitted, but new ones would not be because they're within 1.5 miles.
Of a existing gas station today.
But you specifically said that you took away the circles of the other existing gas stations, so are there no gas stations within 1.5 miles of those other?
No, so there's quite a few other gas stations that are not represented in this map. This is mostly for illustrative purposes. So a lot of these fall within maybe two or three different 1.5 mile ranges of a gas station.
Right, so I'm just trying to figure out how that actually meets the objective of continuing to allow it to be permitted in the ones that are already there if they also are within 1.5 miles of an existing gas station.
Yeah, so the ones that do have gas stations within them, I'm trying to think about. I know that the, let me see if I can point here.
I think what, what the intent of this is to prevent the overproliferation of gas stations within developable neighborhood commercial areas, right? So we're saying, like, for example, let's just use north of I five as an example, so you've got the one site where you have the Meridian Market proposal, and then you have the two other developable neighborhood commercial sites, both there in the yellow boxes. Is that because both of those are within one and a half miles of an, of an existing gas station within a neighborhood commercial zone, you can't therefore develop any other. So that within a neighborhood commercial zone would be part of that restriction. Correct, yeah. So there are other gas stations. So the 7-Eleven there, there's an Arco Station, right, but this is specific about requirements in neighborhood. I guess I was just confused because you, you talked about the Union Mills one being covered by the one that was outside of the, but in reality, might not be.
Yeah.
Well, I think, no, I think, because I think the language, suppose the language would be, if you were going to develop on a, on a neighborhood commercial zone site, you could not locate a new gas station if there's an existing gas station within a mile.
If that, if that existing gas station isn't in an existing neighborhood commercial zone.
We could go either way on that. Really what it is, is.
That's what you're showing on the map.
Yeah, yeah, right now, aside from the Union Mills one, all of the neighborhood commercial districts are covered by other neighborhood commercial districts. We could approach that in a couple of different ways. Really what it's doing is that unless there's a gap created, where a zone isn't really served by a gas station, it's really the only scenario where a new one could come in and want any of these districts.
So maybe we can skip, some of this will be handled in the polling, and I don't want to, you know, we'll have, we can get to the polling and have some time left for discussion, I think would be, would be a good idea at this point.
All right, let's see if I can.
Can you ask a couple of clarifications on the polling?
Yeah, for sure.
Love it. It's very gadgety, very fun, terrible on Valentine's Day, but, okay. That being said, is this some new process we're going to be doing? Is this to try to get the voices in the room, which is great? Okay, so is it anonymous, or is it, how are we, is that what we're doing? We're, it, it just, it seems awkward and a little against the culture we've had in the planning commission, so I'm just trying to get comfortable.
So you missed the last meeting.
Okay, my apologies, that, okay.
And, and as a result of the last meeting, we've had to change up a little bit as far as how we address the planning commission coming to consensus. And it feels like at this point, we're not going to be able to come to consensus, so what we need to do is, in, in, as an alternative, is to do some polling, which will then kind of level the playing field as far as what the planning commission wants to see in the draft going forward. Again, it's just the draft that's going to the public hearing. This isn't a final version of anything that you're, you know, recommending to the council. This is just a way to, you know, have the conversation focused around, you know, the, and, and have a way to be able to, you know, see the results of that immediately and be able to discuss it with people too that may have voted a different way. Does that make sense?
Yes, totally. So my apologies for missing the last meeting.
Yeah.
If we have questions, though, like, you know, clarity on, you know, what does this one and a half miles mean? We should have those ideally answered prior to the polling, correct? So that we're all answering the same question with being fully informed.
Why don't we ask the questions if you have any that come up during the polling?
Gotcha, okay, okay, thank you. My apologies for that redundant, because I, as I was trying to catch up to speed.
And it's all anonymous. We don't know who you are.
Well, I don't worry about it.
We know who you are.
I have those on my team. I'm pretty sure I know who answered that one.
Okay, and I believe, yeah, we're actually getting into polling for gas stations. So everybody has a single vote for this question, but the question is, should gas stations be permitted within neighborhood commercial districts? The three options are as a permitted use with no limitations. Second option is with limits, so those limits could be some of the things we talked about, but we're not necessarily being, clarifying what those limits are at this time, but we will, actually the next couple of pages, if we choose to move forward with that one. And then the third alternative is not permitted in any circumstances. So fully permitted, fully not permitted, or somewhere in the middle with some limitations are kind of the three options right now.
And since I haven't voted, obviously you guys kind of asked a question.
I mean.
I'm not one of the five that are up there. Who's touched their phone? Okay, so, okay, sorry, I'm just being, so the limitations could be things we've discussed or other things that yet haven't even been brought up.
For sure. Yep.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Why would banning future gas stations retroactively affect the previous ones? I, I can understand why they may not want to, say, continue their reinvestment in that property forty years down the line, but I think technology is going that way anyway, so it feels like we're having this really robust debate about something that's going to become moot in twenty years.
If there are combustible engines, it will be.
So, so I feel like.
That are still.
Correct.
And the thing is, so, so what happens is, if, if my business, what, gas station, pet shop, whatever, is suddenly a not permitted use. Now, I, my building's wearing out, I need to do some major renovation to it. I come to the city, it's no longer a permitted use, I'm severely limited on what I am able to do.
Wouldn't they, as a pre-permitted business, have a grandfather in? No, it retroactively applies. Is this like all code, all zoning, so it's all retroactively applied?
Yes.
That seems counter.
It's not retroactively applied, it's applied now, now you're no longer.
Yeah, but in your example, then there would be no, so they wouldn't be able to renew their business license because they would be occupying a space with an unpermitted activity there.
We're allowed to operate, continue to operate as they are.
But not expand or change.
But they, they can't expand. If the building is wearing out and you need to do major renovations, you're not going to be able to do that. All you're going to be able to do is maintain the building.
It seems like a system-wide code failure, because that would force a lot of businesses and things out unintentionally. Wouldn't they then have to prove that they're changing substantially? Otherwise, they could still.
Know when they get the permit.
Correct, correct. So I'm just, I'm seeing this and it's not making any sense to me.
Broad discussion that's beyond our scope.
Okay, fair.
But, I mean, it's a fair point. I want to give you that, but I think it's way going sideways.
It is a tangent.
Any other discussions on this one before we move on? All right. So the next question is, should gas stations be limited to a specific neighborhood commercial district locations? And really what this one gets at is some of the subjects that we talked about. So one of the examples here is south of I five only. One of the other ones is not within 1.5 miles of another station, so that's also what we're talking about, those rings. Option four is actually a combination of both two and three, so south of I five only, and also not within 1.5 miles of a station, and then option one is no location limit, so it can be allowed anywhere.
Can you get two votes on this one?
This one's a single vote as well.
May I ask a question?
For sure.
Wait, so the previous question was about limitations, but this, you're speaking only to the singular limitation or the north-south or the one and a half miles versus other limitations that might have been considered. We're just speaking to just only these two possible limitations, correct?
Yep, yeah, so these are the two most commonly discussed ones in relation to gas stations up till this point. That's not to say that more haven't been thrown out and that more may not, or may come in as part of the community public comment period, which we would consider as part of that, and then look at them as a potential alternative as well. But right now, as it stands today, the, the two most commonly referenced limitations that we've encountered have to do with a north-south divide and a 1.5 mile ring around those stations.
May I ask another question?
For sure.
Sorry, if this is, is the, what, where was the 1.5 developed? Was that so that was a circle big enough to encompass, or was that a strategic amount? Is there some study, where the 1.5 versus one or two miles come from? I, I don't recall. We probably talked about this on, so I'm sorry if I.
No, you're, you're good. This is what we're here for. So 1.5 was selected because it was, we've had some studies come in from prospective developers, and that's kind of their typical, like, when you're looking at a local scale, what their service area is. So that was part of what it informed it. Also, we were looking at, what does that number look like that is going to potentially encompass all of these districts? And 1.5 is that sweet spot that captures all of them. So. Everybody had enough Tina?
No. Hey, you guys want to know where I vote?
She's the last one. Everybody don't watch.
I feel like you're kind of doing that to yourself.
No, I mean.
Well, I missed a, I missed a couple of meetings, so I apologize for that, but I think.
Here to have these discussions.
I think this is important.
It is, I agree. All right. And then the other question that did come up was, should gas stations be permitted as an accessory use to grocery stores? And this is specific to neighborhood commercial districts. If they have or are getting a grocery store. So, uh, options here are yes, as an accessory use to a grocery store, uh, or no.
So if you vote no, is that no, no gas stations at all, or?
This is specific to the question of grocery stores.
Associated with a grocery store?
Yeah. So a lot of the comments, and this mostly has to do with north of I five. A lot of the feedback that we received was, there's a need for a grocery store. And when we've actually gone out to potential developers, when we've talked about property owners, when we've talked to grocery stores. Uh, one of the criteria that they typically have when they're looking at the sites is, does it accommodate a, a gas station? So this question is getting at. If a grocery store is only going to really site in one of these locations, provided they can also have a gas station, is that something we want to entertain? Or is that not something that we're interested in within neighborhood commercial districts? Um, that's not to say that that could, that instance or example couldn't exist somewhere else in a different general commercial district or some other commercial district. Um, but that's just within these districts. If a grocery store is contingent on whether or not a gas station is permitted there or not. Is that something that you want us as a city to entertain and, uh, as a potential use? Yeah.
Haven't voted and I have a question.
For sure.
So we're not talking mini-marts, we're talking a true grocery.
Yeah, and that is, that's a great, uh, comment. Um, yeah, these are full-service grocery stores. Specifically not mini-marts, specifically not the gas station, mini-mark combo kind of thing.
In neighborhood commercial. Gotcha. And could, uh, these neighborhoods, are these neighborhood commercial sites large enough to have like. A Fred Meyer and a Safeway and a gas station? Is that within your size limitations? Is that even realistic that? However we vote, that we could fit all of that into one of these neighborhood commercial districts?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, we looked at the average size of a lot of the different grocery stores that exist within the example districts. We looked at some other average size of grocery stores and that right, really is right around that thirty thousand to twenty-five thousand square feet.
So it's a small store.
Yeah.
It's not a Fred Meyer.
Uh, not, not a Fred Meyer.
I'm of a large size, I know that.
Um, the Metropolitan Market in the Proctor District is, I think, right around twenty-seven thousand. All of the Spuds, the Sprouts, all of the other ones like that are actually in the ten thousand range. Uh, Ralph's Thriftway, uh, over in Olympia is under that thirty thousand square foot. Um, and those are all based on our square footage, uh, examples that we were talking about. Those are all assuming that those are single uses, uh, which is that thirty thousand limit. If, say, a Starbucks went into that grocery store, or a Subway, or some other, uh, post office. Something or other went into that, then at that point it would transition into a multi-use, and that square footage actually could be even up to forty thousand. Um, but both those, that, those sized square footage buildings and the districts that are currently undeveloped have the potential to accommodate that scale.
I'm not watching.
Everybody can look over there, really.
There we go.
Are we all in? Okay.
User is a lot quicker than me, sorry. More thoughtful, I, I guess, or two questions, too many questions.
And then the last question, uh, specific to gas stations is, if permitted. Uh, should there be a limit on the number of pumps allowed at stations? And keep in mind that a pump typically accommodates two vehicles at a time, so one pump, two vehicles. Yes.
No, I was just, I was just, look, I did a wave, like, one on each side, that was.
All right. Any other questions on this?
Questions, so, but, because you said at the last meeting that the grocery stores did say that they, if they were to build it there. If, if I recall this accurately, was that they would want to have four pumps for the larger grocery stores? Or maybe that's a misremembering.
Uh, so we have had some feedback there, but more specifically, this number actually is. More based on our existing gas stations within existing districts and how many they already have. So again, kind of getting back to that. Uh, what seems to be the number when these, this use does exist within these locations, that seems to be the, the, the right fit for that scale. And that area.
How many pumps at Meridian Market?
There's four pumps, which have the potential to serve eight vehicles at a time.
And how many pumps at that Chevron with the?
That one has more. I think that's up to.
Two, three.
Yeah, yeah.
Three rows.
Yeah, that one is the largest by far. All of the other ones that are in existence are at that four mark. Or less.
Do I have to vote?
On a more general.
I really have no opinion on number of pumps. I just don't have expertise.
Sorry. Is, is anybody going to develop for less than four pumps?
Yeah.
Is there enough draw to bring people in to make enough revenue with the sale of other things to justify that?
So that was actually one of the discussion points that was hit on in the council meeting that I shared. In the last probably ten to twenty years, that scale of a gas station hasn't, nobody's come into the city looking to build at that scale. Uh, that isn't something that, that's not a permit that we received. We haven't had those conversations anytime that anybody is coming in, whether it's an accessory use or not. Sorry, uh, it's typically at that four or larger.
See, my experiences in my career, it's been four pumps, has been the.
It seems like that's the minimum draw.
Just so everybody's aware, you know, that a, a gas station can be a store, they don't make, the, the margin on, on. Fuel is really low, right? So they're making their, their margin on you walking into the store and buying a, a slurp beer, a, you know, hot dog. That's where they're making their money versus on the gas. And so, you know, I, I think the number of pumps. Generally, that's been kind of the industry standard for small stations is four. Uh, but, you know, they're not making the money on the gas either.
Yeah. Anything else on this one?
I'm sorry, I abstain. I have no vote. I don't know enough about gas stations, I just don't.
And that's perfectly fine. So we've asked a lot of different criteria-related questions on when these may or not be permitted. And those are not necessarily standalone, they can be cumulative. So, I mean, you've already provided feedback on other ways that may or not limit gas stations, so. It's okay not to have an opinion on some of them.
So on this one, Hans, instead of going to the video, can you just kind of paraphrase the council discussion and?
Yeah, for sure. We got a.
Yeah, we're at, uh, seven thirty.
Yeah, so we made it through the gas stations, now we're on to ground floor residential uses. So as a quick recap, uh, residential is currently only permitted above ground floor commercial within these districts. So ground floor residential is not currently permitted. Um, that said, uh, we've asked the community about it, we've asked council about it, we've had different public, uh, meetings and kind of workshops about it. Uh, the general, uh, yeah, feedback from council is that they're interested in exploring ground floor commercial. Pretend, uh, provided that it's either connected to affordability, um, or some. Trying to put me on the spot now, now I have to remember all the things that were discussed in that. Um, yeah, the, the two topics I think came up as part of the council discussion related to that is either. Requiring some percentage of those units to be affordable if they're located on the ground floor. Uh, and the other one was some form of density bonus. So if you're providing residential on the ground floor, maybe you can build a slightly larger building than what you may otherwise be allowed to in those districts. And those two discussion topics are actually related to each other, they're not separate. So if you're potentially building ground floor residential that is affordable, maybe you get, uh. You get the bonus of building ground floor residential, but maybe you also get an additional kind of square footage bonus on. How much of a building you're allowed to build within these districts. Those were the two topics and kind of the ideas that were put forward. Uh, if we are to, uh, add into our code that ground floor residential is possible.
So, for clarification.
Yeah, for sure.
So are we talking, where you actually have living units on the ground floor? Or where you've got a lobby and a recreation center on the ground floor, or residence, and then units up above?
So in this instance, uh, that lobby and recreation wouldn't really check the box of a commercial on the ground floor, based on our current code how it's written. Um, if we were to introduce ground floor residential, that could, that lobby recreation room could then kind of check that box and be part of that design. Uh, but that's not something that we've dealt with yet. So, so work?
Yes.
Cool.
This would not take it from a neighborhood commercial that has commercial usage to solely multifamily residential.
And that's a, that's a great point. So, yeah, any residential on the ground floor that is, uh, potentially allowed within these districts. We definitely want to make sure that it is connected to a commercial requirement. Reason being is that these are first and foremost commercial districts. And we don't want to make an allowed use of residential or an allowed use of commercial, and then just have somebody come in and do full-scale residential. Which we have had in some other districts, so it's something we want to avoid. Um, that said, uh, there are some kind of, what does it look like? What are those? Since it's a new use that we would be potentially accommodating, it's an opportunity to place some criteria on. When and where that use is possible and how that can be accomplished. So that's kind of the discussion that we're gonna run through here.
We should be considering like the polling as we answer, I'm assuming too, and there was not a strong opinion on the ground floor, if I recall correctly. Did you say that already?
Correct, yeah. So when we asked the community, and I think I have a, I'm gonna jump ahead here, I think, okay. If I don't answer your question in the next two slides, let me know. Um, example districts, same ideas last time, I looked at example districts, uh, required in Briggs Village. Again, we had that conversation that Briggs is a little different, um, but it is a requirement there. It's permitted in Point Ruston, Proctor District, Fairhaven, Dupont, and Woodland, or Wildwood. Uh, and then in Bridgeport, also University Place. Uh, only live-work style residential units are permitted on the ground floor. Whereas residential again is more akin to our current code, where it's only permitted above ground floor commercial. Um, and I think this is the one, community feedback, there we go. So generally speaking, community feedback, the biggest response rate, so we kind of asked, do you strongly agree? Do you kind of agree? Are you pretty neutral or disagree, strongly disagree? And the majority of feedback was relatively neutral on this topic, whether or not it's ground floor or not. Uh, it did lean a little bit towards positive direction, but not very strongly the way that some of the other elements that we asked about. Owner developers, when we talk to either existing property owners, specifically of the undeveloped lots. And or existing commercial owners that had some kind of ownership stake in one of these neighborhood, neighborhood commercial districts. Um, their requests and feedback was that they're looking for more flexibility, and that does include ground floor residential as a use. Potential benefits of ground floor residential is that it softens district edges, so that transition between kind of the commercial. Center of one of these districts and adjacent residential units. So potentially these residential units could kind of slot right in between, so it's more of a residential transition to the commercial center. Uh, and then it also came back to that supporting primary, uh, commercial function. So we looked at how many residential units does it take to support X amount of square feet of commercial space? And some of our districts don't quite hit that yet, so increasing the amount of. Residential units in close proximity to districts actually supports and further kind of. Uh, yeah, encourages commercial development in these zones. So those are some of the potential positives that come out of it. And some of the feedback that we received, more so from the developers when we were getting into those details, because the community was. At large, relatively neutral on the topic. So, answer that question?
That does, thank you.
Um, so yeah, first question, and we're just gonna jump right into it at this point. Uh, ground floor, and again, this is only asking about ground floor, so we're not talking about above ground floor. Um, so second story and above, not really focusing on that right now. Um, but should ground floor residential be permitted within neighborhood commercial districts? Three options are, as a permitted use without any limitations, just the answer is yes, if you want to do it, you can. Um, with limits, uh, those locations, uh, limits have to do with things like location, intensity, and scale. And again, these are general categories that we can get into in a second, and then not permitted in any circumstances, so. Keep it as it is, essentially not allowing ground floor residential.
But as permitted would be, that there still has to be the commercial aspect.
Right, so that's the one that we're not really gonna move on, because we want that to be connected to. Yeah, in order to get ground floor residential, you have to meet some threshold of commercial first. Um, because these are commercial districts and they're not residential. But other things like the number of stories, how big they are, their orientation towards kind of the district, things like that are all. Things that we can kind of explore and fine-tune, also things like affordability, um. Everybody in on this one?
Yeah, I was on the last vote.
Speeding up as the evening goes on here. All right, uh, if permitted, uh, what limitations bonuses should be, uh? Placed, I don't know. Maybe placed on ground floor, yeah, it's gotta be placed. Um, thank you. Uh, residential use, this, I'm falling apart here. All right, uh, really the three scenarios that we talked about are no limitations. Uh, some kind of affordability requirement, uh, and that can be based on area median income. It's something that we have in a few of our other districts, uh, but that's to say that, say you do ground floor commercial, uh, residential, then. And I'm making this up at this point, but say ten percent of the residential units have to be affordable, and that can be based on area median income. And we have ways of accomplishing that and tracking that. Uh, and then the other one is, that was talked about, is maybe density increases. So encouraging, uh, ground floor residential that is maybe affordable, and then by doing that, maybe there's a. Bonus that they get as far as square footage or height or something. And on this one, you actually get two votes, so. Um, yeah, how about it?
Question?
For sure. No, this is what we're here for.
I'm not understanding, and again, I apologize if it's something I missed, I'm not understanding why we would tie in. I'm totally about affordability on housing, one hundred percent. I'm not understanding why we're tying it only to the ground floor uses versus why, why the specificity to ground floor, that. I, I don't understand the connection. Um, affordability important, we need to consider that in any housing development of any sort. Why would we want something special for ground floor?
So it's, I guess, the, the, it's easier in some ways because it's a newly proposed use, so. It, that we have a little bit more, uh, opportunity to kind of influence what our goals are for these districts, because we're adding a use. Uh, when we're imposing kind of further restrictions on, and it currently allowed use, it gets a little tricky sometimes. Um, that's not to say that we couldn't do that, but, um. So far, that conversation has been in, uh, specific to when we're adding uses, for the opportunities to kind of place. Place further limitations or kind of dictate how those uses can be accommodated in these districts if we want to allow them.
So any new kind of housing kind of situation, are we building affordability into approving some sort of new housing kind of code or something?
Greater conversation about how we're gonna do that is gonna be part of the comprehensive plan update process. So when we address affordability requirements on the other, the, the above. The first floor, we need to look at the, the entire city, right? And figure out what affordability requirements should be for everything across the city, if we'd even do affordable affordability requirements, so. Um, like Hans said, here, we're affording them kind of more rights. So before, they weren't allowed to build ground floor retail, now we're saying they are, but as a trade-off, we want something in return. And so the question here is, what would you like as that thing in return? Would you like more affordability or, you know, more, to see more density on that site as a requirement? So that's really the question here. It's not so much about the rest of the units that are on the second floor and above.
Um, thank you.
Does the density coverage, is that saying like going over, covering more than fifty percent of the lot, or?
Yeah, so an example could be, say you build X number of affordable units, maybe you get an extra fifteen percent of lot coverage as a result of that. Um, so there's incentivizing, uh, that affordability kind of, because. A lot of times developers aren't too keen on building affordable units, so finding ways that make it, uh. Incentivized for them to construct it. So maybe there's, that's kind of why there's that requirement, but then also following up with that potential bonus. And do we want to be purely requiring something? Do we want to be purely incentivizing, or is there space to be both? What does that look like? Um, and to Ryan's point about why the affordability kind of in a general sense is a better fit for a whole-scale discussion. Not to say that this would happen, but it might disincentivize residential development if we require it on all of the units. Just in neighborhood commercial districts. So if we come at it from a citywide approach. That disincentive isn't as strongly focused in neighborhood commercial districts as it's more of a broader discussion.
So I thought the new code made it mandatory for all new developments or no? Oh wait.
Not aware of what the new code.
Confused about that, that a certain percent had to be affordable for new developments.
We don't have anything currently. The closest thing we would have is like our multifamily tax exemption. That applies differently. It's an eight-year exemption if you do our, uh, market rate versus a twelve-year exemption if you do a portion affordable. Uh, we also have some fee exemptions for affordable uses and those kinds of things, but we currently, we don't have anything on the books in Lacey. That would, that's requiring a certain percentage to be affordable.
Generally speaking, though, it, it seems to be more successful when it's a citywide approach than, than district. Gets a little bit more difficult, especially if one district is different. one district is different than another and then trying to apply all of those and make it understandable for uh, potential developer to interpret quickly and understand.
So as as part of the vision of these neighborhood commercial districts, this is going to be the social hubs of Lacey presumably. Cause we don't really have a really well established cultural downtown, so to say. But so I'm envisioning these are all going to be small kind of enclaves of businesses, possibly with residential above surrounded by residential. So I'm assuming these are all gonna be gathering spaces.
The intent is that they're neighborhood level gathering spaces. They're not by no means intended to be kind of the primary gathering space of regional, but but yeah, one of the ideas behind these districts, one of the things we've heard from the feedback is that kind of giving these neighborhoods that don't really currently have a central hub or gathering space somewhere that that can take place and exist.
Yeah, okay. I'm just trying to envision how ground floor residential plays into that vision.
And that gets back to uh, having a requirement for X number of square feet or a minimum amount of commercial first. Uh, in order to have that opportunity. Uh, so it's still kind of mixed use, but maybe more of a lateral mixed use instead of a vertical one. Um, but yeah. Any, anything else on this one? I think that might be my, this might be my last slide, so. Not there yet, but I may have done it. Okay, um, incorporating updates. So this is really just looking at next steps. The top bullet there is where we're at today. Um, based on this feedback, we're gonna update our code and roll out a draft version of that that we're gonna share with the community at large. Uh, we're gonna solicit feedback for about a month and then we're gonna come back on March thirteenth uh, and host a public hearing. So we'll be collecting feedback throughout the duration of that month, but then also folks will have an additional opportunity to come in in person and uh, talk about the proposed code as it's written.
Are we gonna get a chance to discuss the proposed code before the public hearing or will we also be seeing it?
Yeah, we're gonna take all of the feedback that we've received tonight, uh, work that into the code and then we'll be sending that to you. Uh, as well as to the community at large.
What, what? That'll be our next meeting.
Is that on our next meeting?
I was just gonna ask the question, is that your preference? I mean, would you like to see the draft code and and go be able to go through it? Okay.
So at least have more discussion on all the things that we kind of conceptualize today.
Okay, perfect. So what we'll do is we're gonna read, you know, we're gonna take this information and we're gonna formulate it into final code language that will be um, taken to the public. Um, and then we'll come back at your next meeting and and brief you on what that is. So you are all aware of what is in that code. Be able to ask questions and and at that point, we're not going to be changing anything, right? That that's gonna have to wait till after the public hearing because this is the draft that we're sending out to the public. You know, things can be changed certainly after the public hearing, come back for the public hearing and then based on that, you can hold work sessions amendment, you know, still provide your draft amendments and then make recommendation to council. So is that kind of, does that generally sound?
Yeah, if we get the language at our next meeting to discuss so we can see it before the public hearing. What that's gonna be able to do is give us perspective as we're getting to public comments.
Yeah.
To under, maybe understand a little bit where they're coming from.
Yep. And and just so, um, you know, especially for the new members that haven't been involved in the public hearing process before. Uh, this in my mind will be a fairly well attended public hearing. I think, you know, it's still, it'll be mostly surrounding, you know, Meridian Market and that area. I don't think we'll really get anybody too far south of I five. Um, so just be prepared that we, you know, it'll be a a fairly well attended meeting and and um, Daphne will probably have to lean on you for kind of running things in the room while while Jeff is is remote. Uh, it's helped in the past for us to have kind of a little bit of a script or to provide that script to the the chair. Um, and what we can, you know, who who is the planning commission? Um, you know, those kinds of things. Cause sometimes people come and think you're the council. What what we'll do is we'll kind of cook up a little bit of a. Yeah, what's your salary? I pay your taxes, right? You know, I pay your salary. Yeah, yeah. My taxes pay for your salary. Um, which, you know, that's always ironic, isn't it? Um, is, um, we'll have that prepared and then you know, you guys can give that that information to the public because sometimes this is also you know, some members of the public's first public hearing as well. And so they don't really know the decorum. So we'll make sure that's clear.
Do you think the energy and enthusiasm about this topic is still as strong as it has been or has it waned at all?
Looks like Judy's nodding her head and she lives out there.
Community of eighteen hundred homes in Meridian Campus. It's alive and well. Alrighty.
You know, there's also, I'm thinking about all of the developments, like if you're talking about that's the farm and stuff like this. There's massive developments right there. And this is gonna affect something that's actually coming in that. I mean, has there been outreach to the HOAs in these different neighborhoods that are also gonna be affected because granted, I hear the the upset about a gas station. But again, there is so much more to this than one gas station that that, you know, in a community that's been affected, but there's lots of pockets of our community. And so I'm just thinking about the fact that, you know, a lot of our our sessions that we have where it's, you know, the community is invited, like here's your chance to, you know, say what you need to say. And then it's like anger at the offset, but it's, so how are we doing that outreach? To make sure that all the people that are gonna be affected by this particular code are actually aware that this meeting has happened because the gas station, it is what it is. And but there's so much, so much more.
Oh, I totally understand what you're saying, Kieran. And and Hans and I can kind of work up some options to talk about, you know, maybe we do some direct mailing to some of the the neighbors that are adjacent to places like the farm or the, you know, the one on Ruddle Road, their Ruddle and Yum Highway, those ones that are uh, would be affected and um, and make sure they're aware. I mean, we can't bring them to the public hearing and they've had, you know, the same, um, you know, the the same materials have been prepared and and provided to the entire community. It's just that you've got this really, you know, cent, center of gravity up there in the the northeast area that's pulling everybody together to, you know, rally around this issue. While the rest of the community doesn't necessarily, you know, have that that concern, right?
Yeah, I'm thinking about.
Until until something happens in their neighborhood and then they'll.
But thinking about Tinkwell because that's where the Union Mills grocery stores, I used to live in that neighborhood. And so but I know a lot of people are on subject, so they don't even get the water mailers. So.
So one thing about Union Mills, it's in Thurston County. So keep that in mind. These were, these amendments only apply to the city limits. So while we're talking about, you know, areas that are in the urban growth area, these old, these amendments only apply to what's in the city limits at this point.
But that Union Mills grocery store is in the city limits or no?
It's in Thurston County.
So this code wouldn't affect them anyway and they could put in how many of our gas stations they wanted to.
They're under Thurston County code. So I I don't, I don't know exactly what that would be offhand, but they're, they would have to abide by the code. It's in Thurston County.
So I was just thinking, I have two uh, two concerns about maybe some misconceptions that the attendees to the public hearing might have. One is that we're not talking about the Meridian Gas Station, right? That's a done deal. Um, and two is that we're only talking about neighborhood commercial districts and what those are because we're not talking about you know, putting in a Fred Meyer or making limitations in any other place in the city other than these eight, whatever, however many there are in the city.
Yeah.
I will say that those two subjects have been have come up every time that we've had any outrage associated with this. And that is part of the messaging that we have to do every time. And I I imagine that it will be also true at the public hearing. So we have developed materials and we do kind of have that language figured out to kind of help refocus and recenter folks.
Could I share a sentiment?
Yeah, for sure.
To build on that. Um, from the feedback that's been shared with me and the roles that I have as a community leader in different capacities. Um, it's more now about wanting to make sure that this doesn't happen to other neighborhoods. I think we've passed the point where everyone understands what's happened to Meridian Campus. It's now more about helping other neighborhoods not go through that. I don't know that it's necessarily, at least, you know, with the venues that people communicate with me. It's just about helping the next neighborhood.
Well, I think what happened in Meridian Campus, uh, the area, it's just reinvolved in it. When an issue is hot, everybody is reading, they're understanding, but the layout is similar, the layout is complicated, all of that, right? There's a few policy books that are involved with the city. And 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 give a lot of input into what they want to see, right? But ninety nine percent of the population, they might read it at the time that it's in the news, you know, cause there's a public hearing or whatever. And it's gone. And and, you know, there's, there's a lot of issues when I was in the city council. Where something come up and the neighbors go, wait a minute, that's been in the plans for fifteen years. And and so codifying it and memorializing it on paper doesn't necessarily achieve the goal that you're after because what you're saying is is exactly true. But when something has been allowed for, you know, fifteen, twenty years and nobody's paying attention to what is allowed. And then it comes in front of the hearings examiner, it comes in front of the city council. Well, if it's a legally permitted use, you can't say no. And and that, then the neighbors all come in, what do you mean? Yeah.
Yeah, it was an education process.
Yes.
So, and you may have covered this, but Hans, we had a lot of good outreach and I think it's important to understand everybody's opinion that contributed in the surveys, not this, those most um, passionate about it in Meridian Market. And has that been shared with the new commissioners as far as some of that? When we did those, because that, those were some good findings as far as the concern other than these soundbites. I don't know. Is there anything that you've given them that before, cause I'll tell you, purse hot public hearing was was stressful, um, not understanding my role, not understanding and and being maybe potentially over influenced by the loudest voice in the room versus the collective voices up from everybody that is expressed concern. So I don't know, maybe is if that's something that would be worth sharing?
Yeah, so the actual process that went through at neighborhood commercial districts is I think in my mind, a success case of the amount of depth and outreach and communication that we've done around this subject. And we actually met with uh, the three new planning commission members and showed them the neighborhood commercial district website. And then within that, all of the findings, all the materials, all of the surveys, all of anything that was kind of generated from the work that we've done associated with this has been added to that page and is available today and has been throughout the process. So.
My gap. Thank you.
Yeah. And Kieran, back to your comment. We've had, we've, anytime that we do any outreach, uh, there's always an opportunity to leave your email or some kind of form of contact information. We've been developing that list throughout this entire process. So we're gonna use our regular formats of outreach. Um, social media, we're gonna probably put it in a paper. We can do some kind of immediately in the vicinity. We've also gone door to door at each one of these locations. But then we also have that pretty long now list of folks that since the start of this process have expressed interest in this. So anytime that there's a big milestone or a big new something that has been developed as part of this, we send that out uh, to that list of folks that have identified kind of an interest in that. So this draft uh, code when we get there will be shared through all of our usual channels, but then also directly with anybody who's expressed interest in this process up to this point. So.
And it's, I mean, it's not unusual that, you know, people don't pay attention until it's happening in their backyard, right? And and I don't know how we can avoid that, that, you know, what we can do is put our best foot forward as far as reaching out to the folks, but you know, until something's happening in their backyard, sometimes they don't choose to participate.
Well, in a, in a sense, maybe that's why this, as Judy was saying, I mean, there's nothing that people that are the most passionate about. But if they're showing up here by the dozen to talk about a future land use uh, proposal, then I guess that's a good thing, right? What else can you do?
Right.
Other than take the people that, you know, are, if they know, if they come here and they know that they're doing this for the good of the future of the city and not for what's happening in the rural market area, then I think that's, that's what we want, right? It's a community engagement. So.
All right. We're at eight o'clock.
Yeah.
We had a really good discussion. Thank you all for your participation. Welcome to the new members. I wasn't here last month and congratulations, Daphne, on being named vice chair. So thank you all. We're adjourned.